Okay, today is Tuesday, December 20. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Mayor Protem, do we have any announcements or introductions today?
I don't believe we have any introductions, but I will go with announcements. Thank you, Mayor. Well, the first announcement I have is with the upcoming holidays, there will be some changes to the city's hours of operations. The city of Prescott offices will be closed on Monday, December 26, in observance of the Christmas holiday and on Monday, January 2, in observance of the New Year's holiday. City office will reopen on Tuesday, December 27, and January 3 at 8:00 a.m., respectively, for those holidays. For more general city information or for online bill pay, you can always visit www.prescott-az.gov. Solid waste collection will remain on the same schedule as usual, so be sure to have your trash curbside by 6:00 a.m. The transfer station will be closed on Saturday, December 24, for the observance of the Christmas holiday. It will reopen Monday, January 26 at 8:00 a.m. And it will also close December 31. That's a Saturday in observance for the New Year's Day holiday. It will reopen on Monday, January 2 at 8:00 a.m. The Prescott Public Library will also be closed on the same schedules. And then, the next announcement I have is there is good news for all taxpaying citizens of Prescott, which is anyone who buys things in Prescott. Effective January 1, 2023, the city of Prescott's transaction privileged sales tax rate is decreasing from 2.75% to 2%. The combined tax rate, state, county, and city for Prescott will decrease from 9.10 to 8.35. The Prescott City Council voted on October 11, 2022, to adopt an ordinance number 2022-1801, eliminating the 0.75% transaction privilege tax dedicated to paying down the city's unfunded liability in the Arizona Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, also known as PSPRS. The new lower rate will begin on January 1. That's all, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you all for braving the elements to be here in the audience today. It's a little light, but I think maybe that has to do with the fact that we don't have a consent agenda. Either that or the fact that the annual audit from our financial statements is part of our regular agenda. So, for either reason, thank you all for coming. I will add one additional comment as we will begin the new year with a search for a new city manager. Late last week, we learned after six years that Michael Omar has resigned his position as the city manager to pursue other opportunities in the private sector. His last day will be February 14, 2023. And I want to, on behalf of the city council, thank him for his service to the city and wish him well in his future endeavors.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Wonderful community with wonderful people.
We'll now have an invocation from Paul Clemens in the Cavalry Chapel of Prescott, followed by a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Tenney.
Well, Merry Christmas, council, and those who are in attendance this afternoon. And let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for who you are, God, and we just thank you for how much you love us. And, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to request your presence and request your assistance here today as this meeting begins. Lord, I thank you for this council and just pray for wisdom as they make decisions and as they move forward in improving things for the citizens here in the community here in Prescott. Lord, we thank you for that. And just pray for wisdom as these decisions are made. And we thank you for the different departments within the city and those that lead them. Thank you for this time of year and what that all means. And we just give this meeting to you, the rest of the state to you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Ms. Woman Can Tell Me.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
We'll move on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I do not have any green cards. Is there anyone that wished to address council? Okay.
Merry Christmas, Michael. Very good. Then we'll move on to the regular agenda, since, as I mentioned, we have no consent agenda on today's meeting agenda. So we'll start off with item A, discussion approval of the 2023 legislative agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Tyler Goodman with the city manager's office, here with Barry Aaron, our representative down there. Well, not a representative, but our lobbyist down at the state legislature. We went through a lot of this during your strategic planning session, so I won't go too in-depth, but I'll just highlight it. And Barry's here to add additional information. The first, we go through guiding principles. These two principles are what allow us as staff for the council to go and change pace. If the state legislature throws something out that we need to either support or oppose, these generally give us the ability to do that. Barry mentioned in his updates during the strategic planning that we are probably going to see something on housing, on residential rental tax, and on food for home consumption tax. Both of those are built into the first, opposing preemption of local authority, and the second, preserve local funding. So we intend to support or oppose, most likely oppose those things I just mentioned, but support other elements that could be coming forward to help with affordable housing throughout the state. As you've been aware, the state has had an interim. During the summer, they had a committee studying housing and affordability across the state. Cities put in a lot of input. The mayor presented at one of their meetings here in Yavapai County. And we suspect that they'll be coming forward with recommendations. We're not sure what the full length, breadth, or depth of those is going to be, but we're ready to respond. And the League of Cities has been very involved as well. So those are some things we're looking at. More specifically, our objectives. One is to continue to maximize partnerships, to advance priorities for the airport. This mostly has to do with funding at the state and federal levels. The next one is to continue the state budget appropriation for the hotshots. As you know, this is built into the base budget. We've had it now for four of seven years. So we've received $4 million. There's three more to go. We basically just ensure that it's built into the base budget to get our $1 million for this next fiscal year. Barry already addressed the tourism marketing authority, so we have that in here to support if it's offered by the visitor industry, if a bill comes up. And something we've had now for at least a year, maybe two, is expediting water adjudication issues. This is more specifically for the Gila adjudication. But basically, it's so that we can evaluate the effectiveness of the money that's been put towards adjudicating these issues. It has to do with groundwater and surface water. And of course, that could potentially impact us, and we are very interested in how this proceeds to protect our water resources. And finally, the concept of a regional park in Prescott. And this has to do with continuing funding for the Dells and Glassford open space area that we are in partnership to acquire, and we're pushing forward with that. And we'd still like to receive more state funding, so we have that as a priority. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Attorney Young, have you received any kind of an update from Clyde Halsted on the status of the Gila adjudication?
Yes, Mayor, we have. Actually, we're in the process of trying to coordinate how to communicate to council, either through a study session or a memo that was created by Clyde Halsted, which he's created and we've been looking at and will distribute to each of you, and we'll seek to set it on a study session in the future.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? I think we have one from Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for Barry and for Tyler. I know when we were talking about open space a few weeks ago when we were reviewing the general plan, there was a brief discussion about approaching maybe a legislature such as Ken Bennett or Selena Bliss or Quan to maybe represent putting the issue of the state park on a bill or for the purpose of seeking funding in this next fiscal year. So have you made contact with these elected officials? Have these conversations been held? Or where are we at with that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Moore, yes. I exchanged emails with Selena Bliss. I have to make sure that my numbers are carefully done when we open a folder. We haven't yet opened the folder, but we will within the next two weeks. I hope that Representative-elect Bliss will choose to be the sponsor of the bill. Get that confirmed. And I have to go through the numbers to make sure that what we put into the bill in terms of numbers is correct. And just for your clarification, the way it will likely work is we get a bill introduced, go through committees, hopefully get it through one house, and then it will stop. And then if it appears to have broad support and the three members of this delegation from Yavapai County essentially, Mr. Bennett, Ms. Bliss, and Mr. Winn, push for it in the budget, then what is included in the bill will then go into the budget. So the bill will stop. Doesn't mean the bill was killed. It's just that the bill was initiated, and then the money will go into the budget. And that's our plan. I can't tell you that it's going to happen or not, but we're sure going to. We think that's a reasonable plan, given the numbers that we've heard between the federal government, the county, and then the city of Prescott, city of Prescott Valley, and then the remainder hopefully being matched by the state of Arizona.
Thank you.
So the strategy there is to have one of our representatives carry this bill to solicit support from the broader House and potentially the Senate. So when it does come into budget negotiations, probably sometime in June, it's more likely that that'll be appropriated because of the broader support.
That's the goal, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
That's all.
Mr. Goodman, we appreciate the update. And I think the legislature convenes, I think, on January 6. Is that correct? So I'm sure the updates will be forthcoming.
They will. I'm looking forward to it. We can do it.
I'm not.
Yeah.
Spoken with a long amount of wisdom and experience. All right, so we'll move on to our next.
I do need a motion on this.
I will make a motion.
I entertain a motion to support our legislative agenda.
I move to approve the 2023 legislative agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, now we move on to item B.
Presentation and discussion from Hinton Burdick regarding the fiscal year 2022 audit results and financial statements. And Mark's going to do an introduction, but I do have Stephen Palmer with Hinton Burdick on the line. So Stephen, I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself. And then, once Mark's done with his intro, you can go right ahead.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and Councilman Mark Woodfeld, Budget and Finance Director. A pleasure to see you all today. Every year, we go through a financial statement preparation as well as an audit by an independent CPA firm. This year, that was done by Hinton Burdick, same as last year. We have Steve Palmer, as Sarah mentioned, on the line to go through the financial statements that were audited. So over the next three hours, we're going to carefully look at every one of these pages of the financial statements. So with that, I will turn it over to Steve Palmer, who's a partner, managing partner with Hinton Burdick. Sorry if I got that wrong, Steve.
Thank you. I just want to make sure you can hear me okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. My presentation will probably be closer to three minutes than it would be three hours. I'm sure you're all happy to hear that. Thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes to address our governing audit of the city, the mayor, and also to let you know how the audit plans and the result of our audit. Whenever we do an audit, there are several reports that we issue in conjunction with the audit. The first report being independent auditor report. This is our report on the financial statements of the city. We go through a lot of underlying documents, ask a lot of questions, obtain evidence that supports the amounts presented in the financial statement. And then, based on the results of that test work, we issue this opinion. And I'm pleased to report that after completing our test work, it is our opinion that the financial statements of the city of Prescott fairly present the city's financial position and the results of the city's operations for the year ended June 21st. So this is an unmodified opinion. This is a clean opinion. This is exactly the report that you'd like for the city on their financial statements. We could advance this slide, Mark. We issue a second report on the city's internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance with other matters based on our audit work. And as part of this report, we can issue different degrees of findings, with a material weakness being the most significant and a significant deficiency still being important, but not quite as significant. I'm pleased to report that the result of our audit procedures resulted in no findings that were required to be reported in this particular report. We go to the next slide. We also are given specific state legal compliance requirements that we need to pass. Compliance, like I wouldn't use the revenue fund as a good example of the types of transactions we look at, part of the state legal compliance for. And I'm pleased to report that we issued a clean opinion on the city's compliance with the state legal issues that they related to findings and no findings there. Due to the large amount of federal monies that the city received, the city was required to have a federal seed to audit. And in this report, we're required to look at several different programs that the city participated in that were funded from federal sources. The three programs that we looked at for fiscal year 22 were the Airflow Improvement Program, the Coronavirus State and Local Pistol Recovery Funds, and the CDB grant, Community Development Block Grants. After looking at these three programs, I'm pleased to report here as well that we did not have any findings or question costs in relation to those programs. And lastly, we looked at the annual expenditure limitation report. This is also a state compliance type report where we report on whether or not the city overextended the amount that their legal will withstand. And I'm pleased to report that the city was in compliance with this requirement, and our report indicated the city, that an AELR was presented in accordance with a uniform expenditure reporting system. That's really all I wanted to discuss with you this afternoon. I just wanted to let you know that the audit really went well, and I was really pleased with how the city is handling their finances and their accounting and their documentation that makes our work as auditors a lot easier. You have a great finance staff with Mark Lars and all those others that assist with this work. We asked for a lot of documents and asked a lot of questions as we go through this process. And they have always been so very good to answer our questions and provide us with the documents that we need to complete our work and our ability to bring show it out. And with that, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to take those.
And for those of you disappointed that Steve did not go through the detailed financial statements, I'd like to point out they are available on our website at prescott-az.gov. And also, we would be glad to come back and do a full day's workshop on them and go through them in detail for anybody interested.
So should we schedule that sometime before the end of the year?
Yeah, I'm available this coming weekend.
(laughing). I appreciate your accountant's levity. So, Councilman Tenney.
I guess if you're in finance, you have to find humor wherever you can. I just want to compliment you on running such a tight ship. This is a tremendous report, that there's no significant findings of any kind in any area. It means that we're in compliance with all of the. I mean, you have hundreds of rules and state statutes and whatnot. I'm confident that you and your good folks need to comply with. And you're doing that in every substantial measure, and we're lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have great staff in the finance department. And Hinton Burdick, it was a pleasure to work with them. Unfortunately, our city charter requires us to change every three years, so we will not see Mr. Palmer again for a little while anyway. And we will have a new firm next year.
Well, I know we received a lot of very significant federal funding over the course of the last year, not only with FAA funding, but, you know, reading in the Wall Street Journal, some municipalities who've discovered some of the strings attached to their CARES funding and some of the other federal extensions of revenue. And of course, we always are concerned about how well our community development block grants are meeting the federal expectations. So having that area audited and not finding any questionable findings or concerns is real relief. So thank you for your management of that, Mark, and thank you, Stephen Palmer from Hinton and Burdick, for the great results here.
Thank you.
All right, I guess I entertain a motion.
No motion needed on this one.
In that case, we don't need a motion. (laughing). Do we have any public comment on that?
No, Mayor.
All right, now we move to item 7C.
Adoption of ordinance number 2022-1805, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase and acceptance of a public water easement from Keystone at Prescott LLC, and a public water and sewer easement from Granite Dells Estates Properties, Inc., and approving the pipeline installation agreement, city contract number 2023-003 for Section 33, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchases, easements, and agreements.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Let me just start with Merry Christmas to each one of you. The item before you today is to purchase two easements and to enter into a pipeline reimbursement agreement with Keystone Homes. The map that I have up here on the screen is a depiction of the alignment for the city's obligation to provide an easement under the Arizona Eco Development Pre-Annexation Development Agreement to provide an easement to Section 33. So here, over here in the red, this is Section 33. This is where the water and the sewer are, over here on the west, in Granite Dells Parkway in the Granite Dells subdivision. Staff looked at many routes to bring water and sewer to Section 33. Ultimately, the water can only come from this direction. The sewer can also be provided from Granite Dells Parkway, or it can be provided from the north. That would be up to the developer to decide. But in any event, the city's obligation was to provide a route for those utilities, and so we have done that. This first section here, from my marker across to the east, that's on Arizona Eco's land. This parcel right here is owned by them. From this point south, this is the Keystone Homes property. They're going to be building horizontal homes for rent. Their plans have gone through plan review, and they are sitting pending being issued, pending entering into the agreement for the pipeline reimbursement. So as part of their project, they're going to install the 18-inch pipe from this point here at the north to this point here at the south. It's about 500 linear feet for the ultimate 18-inch pipeline that will run to Section 33. That is so that we don't disturb their brand-new project right after they build it. The agreement itself outlines the terms under which we'll reimburse the pipeline. They have an engineer's estimate of cost. They're required to bid the project. And then the city will concur that the prices are reasonable and customary based on bids that the city receives. Once we have that dollar amount, we'll come back to council for reimbursement of the 18-inch pipe along this small corridor right here. Keystone Homes is also granting the city an easement through this same corridor in the amount of $22,925. From this point to this point right here, we already have an easement for public utilities as part of the Granite Dells Estates subdivision. From this point east to here, the city has entered into an agreement with Mike Phan for purchase of the easement for a total cost of $144,050. From this point north, staff has put in an application with the Arizona State Land Department to acquire that portion of the easement from the state of Arizona, and that application is still pending. The total cost of the easements is $166,975, which will be paid for from the water fund. And the pipeline installation agreement costs will be determined and brought back to council later for reimbursement under the agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this item.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, you mentioned the application we have pending with the Arizona State Land Department. Do we have any idea when we'll have a decision on that?
Do you like to talk about that? Yeah.
We may get from Arizona State Land Trust an easement. However, what may come before that is AED may own that land.
Okay.
Which then kind of makes it a moot point.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, just a quick question. You mentioned water and sewer. Are they proposing to put sewer in the same route? Or are we dealing with just water today?
Both water and sewer can go in this alignment.
Okay.
But there is. It depends on the developer and how he wants to build his development, but there's a potential that he could bring sewer from the north. But it would be more costly and involve lift stations and things like that. So it's most likely that they'll follow the same alignment for sewer. But this is the only way to get them water.
Okay. But if they chose to use this route for sewer, they'd be allowed to use the same easement that we're purchasing for that purpose.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
The Keystone Development, I know that's been. Their development agreement has been approved. Have they been allocated water for it?
Yes, Mayor. They received water earlier this year for their project. And they've gone all through plan review, and their permits are sitting waiting to be issued.
Okay, so that's good to know. There's some more rental units that are going to be available for potential workforce people. So that's good to see. And again, all these easements and the providing of water and sewer are all a part of the negotiations for Arizona Eco Development. Very good. Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number 2022-1805. Second.
Have motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
I guess I should have asked for a public comment, but I'm assuming there wasn't.
I would have stopped you. I would have stopped you.
You're very much. Keep me on track there. All right, we'll go to item 7D.
SITE 22-012 and WSA 22-020, approval of site plan application and water service application for VA apartments on approximately 1.69 acres of the 91.56 acre complex. Zoning is specially planned community. Property owner is U.S. Veterans Administration. Applicant Astro Architecture, Inc. Location APN 114-01-001L, 500 North State Route 89.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner. Merry Christmas, before we get going, so I don't forget. Okay. So to overview the project, the proposal, the site plan is a review. There's six houses being converted that have historically been used as officers' quarters. The current proposal is to convert those six single-family residences into 23 apartments. There should be no changes to the footprints. It's already the existing structures. The proposed 23 apartment units is an increase in the water demand, hence why it's coming before you with the site plan application and the water service application. So per the new adopted water policy, any application that has to go in front of the Water Issues Subcommittee also has to go through our Planning and Zoning Commission for a site plan review, which they already did. So here's this map of the area. This is the property we're looking at. This is 89 here, coming out of town. And here's the imagery. It's the VA Hospital project, and it'll be in this area right here. And here's a close-up. It'd be the six houses right here that are being converted. At this time, there's no plans for the others. They're going to see how this goes and what the costs are going to be, and then they may come back in the future, possibly, to convert more, but we don't know that at this time. These are the six houses in question. Like I said, there's no changes to the site plan, the, I mean, the footprints, and the parking is, exists already out in front of each of the apartments. So they have adequate parking already on site, and there's no changes to the footprints. Our site plan review criteria was looked at through our reviewing agencies, and it appears they'll meet all our development criteria, and there was no issues, concerns from any of our reviewing agencies. At the November 10 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the application that was submitted. The previous water usage at this location is 1.02 acre-feet per year. A demand analysis prepared by Kelly Wise Engineering using the city of Prescott demand multipliers calculated the usage as follows. The 23 multifamily dwelling units times, because there's a lot of math here, 2.76 acre-feet per year. So the net increased demand is 1.74 acre-feet per year. So the total's going to be 2.76, but the additional demand is 1.74. The water service application was reviewed by the Water Issues Subcommittee at their December 6, 2022, meeting, and they voted unanimously, unanimously to recommend approval of the project to council as presented. And that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions that you have, and here are the recommended, recommended actions for both applications.
Any concerns or questions? I know this is a pretty simple project when you already have pre-existing buildings that are being converted into multiple residential units in the same building. So it's almost the ideal type of improvement for more housing, especially for veterans on the VA campus. So it's in the city, it's, meets all those criteria. So I think it's a very simple and easily understood approval for this project going forward. Counsel member Rusing.
Thank you. These 23 units are for our homeless veterans. They'll be housed on the VA campus so that they'll have access to all the services that they may need. And this is just another example of how this community is supporting our veteran population. Thank you.
Very good. If there's no other concerns or questions, any public comment?
No, Mayor.
No. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve site 22-012.
Second.
Have motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve WSA 22-020.
Second.
Have motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. Thank you, Tammy, and Merry Christmas to you, too.
I'm not going anywhere yet.
I think she's got a few.
Maybe I'll wish you Merry Christmas, too. We'll go to item 7E.
Next up is RVP 22-008 and WSA 22-031, approval of revision of plat and water service application for the Preserve at Prescott Phase 5, adding an additional seven lots to the overall approved PAD development. Property owner Westridge Preserve LLC, applicant Kelly Wise Engineering, Inc.
So this one's not so simple. This project, this subdivision has a lot of history, but this is the last phase that you'll see in front of you. Well, actually, the other ones were all done administratively. So this was originally the downed subdivision. The, the new property owner bought the whole subdivision and has been revamping the lots to make them more user, user-friendly, I guess. So they were revising the phases to reduce the impact to natural terrain, excavation work, and cost of lot preparation. It was one of paper plats that just kind of looked at, here's the area, this is what we can do, and they didn't really look at the terrain. So we call those kind of paper plats, and they're ugly and don't work well. So he's been fixing this over the years. So this is a planned area development subdivision. A 2011 master plan allowed for a maximum of 144 lots, an allowance of moving density between phases. So between all the phases, phases one, two, and three, I believe we lost some lots, and they were all consolidated in phase four. Phase four was developed with smaller lots, more, and basically, everything was closer together. And it also took in some other density. So when he came cut to phase five, phase five was originally platted with 14 lots. So in revising the lot layouts, he's down to 11 lots, but it is seven lots over what was originally approved for the master plan. So because of these seven additional lots, we are, have a revision of plat that requires to come before city council for approval, and it also required a new water service application. So like I said, this phase is reducing the overall 14 lots to 11 lots, but it is seven additional lots to the overall master plan area. So per the new water policy, this is something that would have came in front of you anyways, but it is also with the new water service agreement application for the additional seven lots. So here's the last phase. This is the phase four I talked about, where they were able to consolidate the lots, lots in the other phases that were replatted. And they also took in some additional lots. So when we got to the last phase here, this is all open space here that was dedicated to the city as part of their agreement. And then these are the last lots that we're looking at now, the last phase. And here's a close-up of those lots. So as he's been working on the roads, I mean, on the development of the other lots, looking at the best building pads for these, these areas, for these lots were plotted, and for the road realignment, there's going to be a change there, too. So basically, he shortened the road coming into, which is a cul-de-sac. And as you can see, some of these lots have been combined or reconfigured to make them more usable lots, based on what we see here on the ground. So this is what we're going to see. So it's going from 14 lots in this phase to 11. So the revision of plat was reviewed by our Planning and Zoning Commission on November 10, 2022. The commission unanimously recommended approval of the project. They felt that the new lot configurations made more sense. And these seven additional lots, because of everything else he gave up with the open space, and it made sense for this development. The demand analysis was prepared by city staff using the warm multipliers. The demand is calculated as follows. Seven residential parcels times 1, 0.17 acre-feet a year per parcel is an increase of demand of 1.19 acre-feet a year. The water service application was reviewed by the Water Issues Subcommittee on December 6, 2022, and voted to unanimously recommend approval of the project to council. And that concludes my presentation. I hope it wasn't too confusing, and I'm free to answer any questions.
Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. The open space that they have committed to the city, is some of that being used for the Centennial Trail, or is, does the public have access to that open space?
All right, the developer's here, and he can answer that question for you. He said yes.
Tom Deveraux.
Yes.
Mayor and Council.
And Michael.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, man. Sorry you're leaving.
My bad.
My name is Tom Deveraux. I accidentally got into this mess in 19, 2005. It was platted in 1988. At that time, it, nothing made sense, other than I got 144 tax bills the first year. And somebody over at the Tax Department thought that those were finished lots, so they were substantial. We got that fixed and started replating these lots, like was explained, and I can't do it any better. That was great. I didn't even understand. I understand it better now. We lost lots, lost lots, lost lots, and then we went down in, in phase four, which is our smaller, cheaper, tighter, better lots. And, and we came up and, at that time, the city was trying to fund open space, trying to buy open space, and other developers were trying to sell open space, threatening the city to turn it into lots. I never, I gave this to the city to prove a point, more than anything is, and, and now that I've had all this experience, there's nothing in Arizona that I can't turn into a lot. But we donated the open space because of that. And, and then, back in the day, I was, and still am honorary member of Over the Hill Gang, and so I not only did we put the trail in, but we built, I helped them build the trail, because at the time, the city had a lot of cool toys they didn't know how to run, and I did. So, no, it came out really good, and the trail has been used a whole bunch, more than we thought, and there was no forethought put into where we were going to park all these people. So I ended up donating last year the, the parking lot that I've been renting to the city for a dollar and paying $1,000 a year taxes on. Should have done that in the first place. I don't know what I was thinking. I was waiting for a year when I made some money, and that didn't work out for me either, because I did it this time of year, and didn't get the paperwork till the next year. So hopefully, I'll make enough money this year to write, write off my, my donation. But, anyway, it's all great. I promise the Water Issues Committee that they won't see me back here. I'm promising, oh, you won't see me back here.
Never see me, ever.
I'm getting too old for this. So, anyway, I appreciate, appreciate everything the city's done for me here. I mean, it was a tough, it's a tough subdivision. It was a tough deal. And staff here, I've been through a lot of turnover in staff here. It's, I've always been treated more than fairly, I think.
Thank you very much, Tom. I know this was a real challenge for you, and hitting these deadlines and tax bills and everything else. Got to finally see the light at the end of the tunnel. It's not a train.
Yeah, I'm going to try retirement for the third time. I hope I don't flunk at this time. Thank you all. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Tom. Counselor Moore, did you have another question?
No. Thank you, Tom, for the donation of that land to the city and for making it available to hikers. Beautiful property.
Counselor Tenney.
I was just going to say the same thing. Mr. Deveraux, you've been a great community partner. That's a terrific trail through there. It's really, really cool. Given what you said, there's a chance you may have been able to develop some of that, but it's nice that you were able to reach an agreement to make that available to the entire community. And it's a trail I've been on many, many times, and I've had, I've brought people there, and they said, "This is right in the middle of town. This is cool. Where'd you get this?" Now, we know the answer to that, for sure. Really appreciate what you've done, and the proposal that's before us is certainly going to receive my support.
And providing that parking area, too, was a big improvement.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. All right, any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to see, Tom, go out with a bang here. So I move to approve RPV 22-008. Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
And I move to approve WSA 22-031. Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Tom. Merry Christmas.
All right. Next up, we have SITE 20, 22-019 and WSA 22-038, approval of site plan application and water service application for Circle K expansion. Zoning Business General, property owner Weed Investments, Inc., applicant Land Development Consultants, LLC. Location APN 106-21-008 L&amp;M, 3101 Willow Creek Road.
Vicky Council, Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner. So this is another site plan review that comes before you due to the water policy. It's the existing Circle K will be raised, and a new larger store will be built with more gas pumps, which is pretty consistent that we're seeing in Prescott Valley and within the city of Prescott. The expansion increases the water demand and requires a water service application to be reviewed by the Water Issues Subcommittee. Here's the zoning map. It is along Willow Creek Road, which is a commercial corridor in the city of Prescott. Here is the current facility here, and then they bought the adjacent property next door. And then at the end here is where we have culvers that went in last year. So here's the imagery of the property. Here's the existing lot and the expansion lot, and then we have the culvers right here. And here's a close-up of that. There are many existing trees along the back of the property. In working with the applicant, this also had to go through, through a conditional use permit due to the gas pumps through the Board of Adjustment. And we did have some concerns voiced from the neighbors along the back, back here, in regards to the noise, because when culvers was built, I guess they created a lot of noise for the neighbors adjacent to them. And so, talking with the applicant, they've agreed to try to keep as many of these trees as possible. They are old-growth trees. Will help create a buffer during construction of the new Circle K facility. And here's the site plan they provided to kind of show. These are the existing trees here, along here, that they're planning on keeping. I think they're really proposing to lose probably two trees, and all the rest of this is new landscaping that'll go in per our landscaping requirements. We do have an expansion of the gas pumps from three to seven. We have the bigger store here, well, that will also act as a buffer for any noise from the gas pumps and hopefully from Willow Creek Road. And then we also over here have the future of electric, electric vehicle charging stations along here. This did go through all our, our review agencies to review the site plan. It appears to meet all our development criteria. The site plan was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 10, and the commission unanimously recommended approval of the project. Demand analysis was prepared by city staff using billing data provided by the applicant. They've used the what, the Circle K and Gila Bend as a comparison, because it's, the size of the building was similar, and the water usage is what they were proposing for this property at 2.54 acre-feet a year. Previous usage at the existing store was 1.08 acre-feet a year, resulting in a net increased demand of 1.46 acre-feet per year. The water service application was reviewed by the Water Issues Subcommittee on December 6, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project to council. And that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
Counselor Moore, do you have a question?
Just a concern, and, and I'm not opposed to the project, but the new Circle K that went on the corner of Willow Creek and Iron Springs Road, that was, you know, where that building was raised, where Hastings was, and then they built the new Circle K. And I feel like the facility itself is good, but the grounds are really poorly maintained. There's a lot of dead trees already, and there's just a lot of trash, to be honest, with you inherent with a convenience store. And seeing how this particular location borders residential area, not really a commercial, it isn't a commercial corridor, but it backs up to residential, I, I'm sensitive to homeowners, because convenience stores, by nature, tend to have a lot of trash, just because of people getting in and out of their cars and opening packages and cups and plastic and pay plastic bags and things. And so I just want to express that concern to the, to the developer that's going to be developing this property, that they try to be good neighbors, because it does border residential area. I just see it every day, because my store, where I currently am located, is really close to the, the Circle K by Hastings.
Counselor Member Rusing.
Thank you. Tammy, I have a question about egress and ingress. It is on a... Busy. Was that Siri?
Siri's listening.
Oh, well, geez.
Her voice got a little higher there, Tammy.
Anyway, I see, you know, I support this project. I think it's a wonderful location for it. There's a traffic light on the corner, but there's two driveways, one on the south end on College Heights Drive, and one on the north end on Willow Creek Road. And I couldn't tell from the landscape plat, site plan, or the site plan that I dug out from the water service meeting. Are the driveways, are they about like 40 feet in width? Do you have any idea? Because I'm, I'm concerned, because people are going to be pulling in, people here in Prescott, you know, we pull boats, trailers... You know, we pull boats, trailers, campers, fifth wheels, RVs. And I'm just concerned that people are going to be exiting onto Willow Creek Road. They're going to be trying to make a left turn and people are going to be trying to make a right turn. Is that driveway going to be wide enough so that, you know, you can have cars entering the property and have someone making a left turn in a separate lane and making a right turn so that they're not backed up behind the person making the left turn?
If you look at the existing facility, this actually has better circulation because when you, it's further away from the lights, the new driveway into it. So there actually is more room that actually if they pull up to go out left, which, you know, I don't know why you would do that. But this was reviewed by our traffic engineer and they didn't see any concerns with the way that it was set, it's been laid out. But this is probably a safer exit out than what you currently have because right now it is pretty close to that intersection and it's very unsafe right now. So the way that they moved it out to the very end and north end, that's actually probably a better location and you have more, further away from the lights to have better clearance.
Yeah, I was out there the other day and saw that driveway that was right next to the traffic light there on Willow Creek. And so that was just my main concern and I was just kind of worried that maybe how the landscaping kind of splays out there, it might create a pinch point through that area. But if people have already reviewed it, and I just wanted to make sure that the applicants know that up here in Prescott, we're always towing something. And you want to capture that business of the people with the trailers so that they don't go down the road to someplace with better, easier access. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. And the materials provided to us, it does show a scale of the width of the driveway. It looks like it's between about 35 and 40 feet, to answer your question. And just to go on the record, I'm never towing anything. I live right near here and you're exactly right. The current access onto College Heights Road looks like exactly what's there now. So no change there. And the access onto Willow Creek Road is actually, looks like substantially now farther away from the light, so probably an improvement in that case.
CW can tell me.
Yes, I have a question for clarity. If you went out this north entrance, wouldn't it be a right turn only? Because isn't there a separator divider raised up on Willow Creek?
It's a median.
Okay, so the medium is raised, though?
It's a middle lane.
Oh, so they could actually go either way? Oh, okay. Yeah, because I was looking at that picture and I thought I remembered when I drive there, there was a raised median. I was just questioning that. Thank you.
I know speaking for myself, I've utilized that Circle K a couple of times and had to make that turn. And a lot of times, there's vehicles that are backed up waiting for the signal light to change to make a left turn onto College Heights. And it becomes very difficult to time the vehicles going north and south, east and west, and then trying to find space where people are waiting to make that turn. So I think this new alignment's going to be much safer and much easier to navigate.
It's way easier to go out on College Heights Drive and just wait for the light. I would never try to turn left onto Willow Creek from there. Turn right for sure. If you want to go to the left, College Heights Drive, wait the light for a minute, move on with your life.
Go on with your life. That's very good advice.
Can we get that on the record, please?
And I do want to mention the fact that I did listen to the deliberations and the resident that was concerned about noise. And it was primarily their concern during construction. So I think once that's completed, then that shouldn't be too much of a future problem for the residents there. All right, very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve SITE 22-019.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve Water Service Agreement 22-038.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. Now we'll move on to item 7G.
SITE 22-018 and WSA 22-042, Approval of Site Plan Application and Water Service Application for Aspire Sports on approximately 9.97 acres. Zoning is Business Regional, Property Owner Aspire AZ LLC, Applicant Stro Architecture, Inc. Location APN 103-20-598J, 3400 Gateway Boulevard.
Merry Christmas, Tammy.
This is the last one for me this year, so. So an overview of the project. This was formerly the Sears Department Store. We've seen a couple of different projects and uses of the building, but this is our permanent building, we hope, used now. We have Aspire Sports purchased the building and has obtained permits and currently open. And due to the use of the additional restrooms, water use, and the proposed future bar and restaurant, they are, they applied for their additional water for the bar and restaurant under the new policy. So now it has to go through the water service application review. So here, here's the property. Here's the mall property. It's this portion right here, the old Sears store. Here's imagery of it. There's a few changes on the back here to add some pickleball courts back here, but otherwise, the site is remaining the same. They own the parking area around the store, so, and there was a joint parking agreement throughout the whole mall property so they can use, have access to the rest of the parking. Then here's a close-up here. The pickleball courts were under construction at the time when this was taken. Otherwise, there's no other improvements around the rest of the property. And here you have the site plan that is for consideration. This was sent, reviewed by our review issues because they had a building permit, so everything was already reviewed and approved. This also was within a commercial corridor overlay, which has additional criteria that they had to adhere to in regards to color and other impacts. And we reviewed that during permitting and they met all the development criteria. The site plan was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 10th and unanimously recommended approval of the project. So the demand analysis was prepared by city staff using patron data provided by the applicant, calculated the usage as follows. 200 people a day times 12 gallons per person per day times 365 days per year for a total plottable demand of 2.68 acre-feet a year. The previous water usage for this location was 0.5 acre-feet a year, resulting in a net increased demand of 2.18 acre, oop, eight, 2.18 acre-feet a year. This application was reviewed by the Water Issues Subcommittee on December 6th and unanimously recommended approval of the project to council. That concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions. And the applicant is also here.
Come on up, Jim.
Hello, my name is Jim Thomas. I live at 681 Driftwood Court, Prescott, Arizona. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for helping us flush our toilets.
Anything I can do for the constituents, I try to do my best. I know that you are planning on using and are using low-water use fixtures there, right?
Yes.
And really, there's no landscaping to speak of at all?
No, there's actually no landscaping. And we actually have been in business for six months and we actually believe we're going to use about a half an acre a foot per year. So I don't know exactly how the demand analysis works, but that's, that's what we think.
I don't think there's really another facility anywhere near the nature of Aspire Sports. So it's kind of a calculated guess when it comes to usage projections. So I think now that you've been operating for a while, I think it's pretty clear that this is probably a very generous estimate and it's much more likely you'll be using much less. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for your investment in our mall. I hear it's under new owners. And it's in a wonderful location and we certainly support any investment that will help revitalize the mall. And I assume you have, it says here you have future plans for like a bar and grill and that this amount of water is included for that. So that's the only comment I wanted to make.
CW can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Jim. I've got a question. Is the, this might be more for Tammy even. The calculation up there is 365 days a year. Are you going to be open that much? Will your store be open 365 days a year?
We're open most of those days, probably 362.
Okay.
But it did say that there's, you know, 200 people a day times 12 gallons per person.
Right.
So I don't know that everybody goes to the bathroom every day in our facility. So 12 gallons per person is a lot of water.
Aren't there showers?
I have, we do have a couple of showers that don't get used very often, but I would say that's probably where it is. And I'm sure it's very difficult to, for the demand analysis to come up with. Like, like the mayor said, there's nothing like us. We're, we think we're, you know, the probably the nicest sports center in the country here in Prescott, Arizona. So we're happy to be here. We love to be here. We love Prescott, Arizona. And, you know, I say to people, you know, now we've had a few things that you can do at night, on a Friday night, maybe go to the movies, maybe go to dinner somewhere. But now we have another thing that we can do in town. So it's pretty nice for the city of Prescott and for the whole.
I think it's great, yeah. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to commend you also, Jim. I attended your ribbon cutting two weeks ago with the Chamber of Commerce and it was a wonderful event and toured your facility. It's beautiful and very impressive. So thank you for what you've brought to the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your investment, Jim. I think it's not only at the moment a destination facility, but it's going to be even more so as the mall kind of regenerates its activity. And even with your plans for another hospitality hotel coming in on the mall parking areas and things like that. And we're going to be looking at a couple of surrounding developments that are bound to generate more foot traffic and activity with your bar, restaurant, and the activities within the Aspire Sports facility.
Thank you. And thank you for the support. The entire city's been very supportive. We're very appreciative and Merry Christmas also.
You've got a lot of mileage, Jim.
All right, any other comments or concerns? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve SITE 22-018.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve WSA 22-042.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Merry Christmas, you guys. Thank you, Peggy.
Merry Christmas, Tammy.
Presentation and discussion regarding the setting of the January to June 2023 residential and non-residential water budgets in accordance with the 2022 Water Management Policy, Policy Number 11, and requesting an interpretation of Policy 14, when an appeal is granted to establish whether by doing so, the amount of water granted in the appeal would reduce the remaining budget by a commensurate amount.
So of course I get the fun one. Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, Ashlyn.
A pleasure to be with you this afternoon. I'm Ashley Couch, Public Works Director. And I want to talk a little bit about really two things. One is to set the water budget for the next six months. And then also request interpretation, I think was an inadvertent admission when the policy was adopted in April of this year. And we heard, there was some conversation about it when this went to the Water Issues Subcommittee. And we're going to be, the staff is seeking direction on how to administer the policy, given that this will be something that we need to apply to every development application that comes in through the city, asking for water, starting January 1st. And so, and you have something in the queue that is going to cause this to come up. So basically, Policy 11 says that in the city's adopt, 2022 adopted water policy says that establishes that the city council will establish a water budget for the next six-month period at the last council meeting in June and last council meeting in December. Policy 12 establishes the residential water budget. Policy 13 establishes the non-residential water budget. And then Policy 14 talks about appeals and that's what we're seeking some interpretation on. So first, let's look back at 2022 as a whole. So these are two six-month periods that are shown on the screen there. And you can see that basically for residential and non-residential, the entire budget of 25 acre-feet per year for each six-month period was never exceeded. There was basically water left over, if you want to phrase it that way or characterize it that way. But on the left, you see on the top, January through June residential budget. And it was 25 acre-feet per year. And then some projects were, 11 were administratively approved, which is everything less than one acre-foot per year. And then anything over one acre-foot per year comes through Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance to the water policy. And then it goes to Water Issues Subcommittee. And then they make a recommendation that goes to city council. And it's at that time that it's deducted from the budget, at time of city council approval, not beforehand. And so basically, the amount of their requests were, if you look at the total, there's 13, basically 13.7 acre-feet per year. So again, there was, there was water in the budget that was more than what was set aside for projects. And then looking at the July through December period, again, the council voted to set the budget at 25 acre-feet per year. And there were three administrative approvals for residential and the one was approved by city council. So four total approvals totaling 13-point, or sorry, 12.3 acre-feet per year. And so again, less than 25. And you could see that basically roughly half of the budget was used for residential for 2022. What about non-residential? Well, the first six months of the year, there were 22 that were administratively approved. They were all less than one acre-foot per year, totaling 16.6 acre-feet per year. So again, there was, it was less than 25. And then for the second six months of 2022, 13 were administratively approved. And then one, three were approved by city council. And the total there was 16 projects amounting to 16.8 acre-feet per year. So again, less than the 25. So, so far, it's been, the amount set aside has been in excess of what has been requested and approved. So, and if you want more detail on this, this is a listing of the residential projects for the first six months of the year. You can see there's, we've got everything from new single-family residence to a 22-lot subdivision. So annexation of the Cactus Ranch Mobile Home Park, things like that, for example. And then looking at non-residential for that same first six-month period, you can see there, basically, we have a number of projects. It's a fairly large number, but still consumed about maybe, say, two-thirds of the water budget. And then it, you know, you can see a lot of TIs there, different uses, may end up needing more water in the same facility. And then this is, I apologize, it's a little bit small, but this is looking at the next six-month period for residential. And again, you could, you could see a number of projects there, four projects. And basically, there was some water left over in the budget at the end of the period. And then this is a listing of the non-residential projects. So variety of projects there. And again, the entire budget was not consumed by projects that went forward. So, so when you're establishing a water budget for the next six months, I think it's certainly good to look back, but it's also good to look forward at what's in the queue. What do we know is coming? So that's what I put in this table right here. Let me zoom out just a little bit. I know that's small. Let me zoom out just a little bit. I know that's small. But basically, the reason we need an interpretation is basically for Palmer Apartments. Now, we need this interpretation kind of outside of any specific project. And I don't, we don't really want to make Palmer Apartments an example. Now we're having this debate about how to administer the policy regarding an appeal at the time that we're doing an appeal. We think it's more appropriate that we have this conversation now, when we're setting the water, water budget for the next six months. So, so Palmer Apartments, just by itself, needs 29 acre feet per year. It's a project south of the mall, basically. And then there's another project in the queue, 32 dwelling unit apartments. And you can see their demand there. And, and so if you add that, if you take the appeal out of the equations, about 4.5 acre feet per year for that 32-unit apartment complex, we're recommending, again, 25 acre feet per year, and it's consistent with what we heard from the Water Issues Subcommittee. And then, and there's the whole peel issue, and we'll talk about that as well, but separately and, and after this. And so if, you know, with, with four and a half in the queue, and we think that 25 is going to be adequate for future projects that come in. But of course, we don't know what's in the queue, what will be in the queue, other than these two projects that have already submitted their, their permit applications. Looking at non-residential, looking at what's in the queue now, a variety of projects there that have already submitted, some of which have already completed their water demand analysis, and that's in that column on the very far right. So, and that totals 7.2 acre feet per year. And then there are two that haven't gone far enough in the process yet to develop their water demand analysis. So an unknown amount for those two projects shown, the Flight Training Center and the Training Building. So, so basically, again, if, if, and this is consistent with the recommendation for the Water Issues Subcommittee, is, is setting the water budget, again, at 25 acre feet per year. We've got still about 18 acre feet per year available for unknown future projects that have not yet submitted. And so that should be adequate. And so the staff recommendation and the Water Issues Subcommittee recommendation is to set the water budget, again, 25 acre feet per year for the next six-month period, starting January 1, and do the same 25 acre feet per year for non-residential. So basically, stay the course. Now, the last issue, I'm sure that, you know, I've spoken with several of you on this. I, I know there's not consensus, but there's two options, and that's basically regarding Policy 14. And I'll, I'll explain those. And this is a policy issue. It needs to come from council, directed to staff, so we know how to administer the policy. So option one is, first, let me just say, this is what, in, in black, is what Policy 14, which you adopted back in April, currently reads, and basically says, if you're going to consume more than 50, if you're asking for more than 50% of the remaining water budget for that six-month period, then, then you need to go through an appeal process. And you, or you can wait. So option one says, wait until the, the next six-month period. And then option two is, would be an appeal that goes to the Water Issues Subcommittee, and then it goes to City Council. And then it'll be decided individually whether to grant the appeal. And then what we're asking for, and interpretation of, is if the appeal is granted, does that come out of the water budget, or does that in addition to the water budget? Because the current policy is silent on that. So option one would be, basically, it would not, if you grant an appeal, so let's say Palmer Apartments comes in, I believe they're scheduled for January. And so they come in, they ask for 29 acre feet. Under option one, if that appeal is granted, then there will be 29 acre feet for Palmer Apartments. And then there'd be the 25 that we're recommending for other residential development between January 1 of 2023 and June 30 of 2023. So option one would basically, the 29 acre feet for Palmer Apartments, as an example, could be anybody else, would not come out of the water budget. Option two, basically, is the opposite, that if an appeal is granted, it would come out of the, of remaining available water budget. And so the, what's, what's in red there, an option one, an option two, would be added to Policy 14 based on the direction we're seeking today. And so if that were the case, let's say Palmer Apartments comes in in January, and let's say the City Council approves that appeal for 29 acre feet per year, there would be no more residential water approved through June 30 of 2023. So the next available time for water to be set aside for new development would be July 1 of 2023. So that would, that would be option two. So we're asking for City Council to do three things. Set the residential water budget for the next six months with the recommendation, with the recommendation being 25 acre feet per year in accordance to Policy 12, and in accordance to Policy 13, set the non-residential budget at 25 acre feet per year for the next six-month period, and then requesting an interpretation on Policy 14 as to whether, if an appeal is granted, it comes out of the water budget or not. And that's, i- if it does not come out of the water budget, that's option one. If it does come out of the water budget, then that's option two. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ashley, for the detail that you provided in your presentation. And I appreciate where this has come along since when you brought it to us, a Water Issues Subcommittee. Particularly, I think initially, the idea was that maybe demand would drive an increase in the water budget. So it's, I, I think what, what you said about the idea that it's useful to look forward, but also backwards. I guess one thing in my mind, when we pass the water policy, and one thing that I appreciated in theory, is the idea that we would have the aid of the Mayor's Ad Hoc Water Policy Review Committee to kind of look at these things and, and vet this process through us. I, under the impression, and I don't know if this is correct or not, but that this is not something that they've looked at in a lot of detail. Mayor, you might be able to say yes or no.
Mayor Protem, I think I'd like to interrupt you.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Because I wanted to address this issue. The purpose of that Mayor's Ad Hoc Committee for Water Policy Review and Monitoring was to do just this, to look at the policy, kind of analyze it, talk about, well, what if this happened, or what if that happened? What would be the best solution for that? And quite frankly, that group has not advanced at the pace that I was hoping they would. I would think that they should be looking at these issues, particularly as we come up for a new allocation of water over these two six-month period of time. But with that said, we're dealing with the fact that they haven't advanced to the point where they're starting to look at this, because we were hoping that we would get some analysis and recommendations coming forward. Let's keep in mind that the goal of that policy was to support measured growth that wouldn't outstrip our ability to provide public safety into these new developments. We were primarily concerned about the developments in North Prescott that is continuing to stretch our ability to respond to public services, public demand, emergency demand, et cetera. But in this case, this particular development is in the city. It's quite close to the Lee Boulevard Fire Station. And it does contribute to the appeal conditions that we put into that policy. When you realize that we're talking about job creation, wages, sales tax, economic impacts, and other benefits that generate the ability for an appeal to be made. Because if you don't have that, and you're just going through the policy, you're asking for an allocation, and you could get it without having to consider any of those things. So I think in this particular project, it certainly meets those criteria for an appeal. And if we're looking at workforce housing and more multifamily units to be made available for job creation, for service sector, et cetera, this not only provides that, but it also has a, an additional benefit of helping to revitalize the, the mall. So I think it meets a number of criteria there. And I think it's up to the Water Policy Committee to kind of accelerate their pace of, of understanding and start to look at some of these things. So we have to decide whether it's a use it or lose it situation. If there's excess water acre feet available from the previous six-month period of time, does it roll over? Or does it reset at zero or 25, and any remaining water that was set aside is no longer available? Or is it fungible? Let's say we had very little use in the non-residential component, like the example that was given. And if we are allocating 50 acre feet combined, can you use some of that for maybe valuable residential developments? That's another question. We're still segregating the total amount of water that we're considering, but we're able to move it from one component to another if necessary. And is 25-25 the right number? Should it be 30-20? 20-30? Those are other questions that I think the, the water policy needs to, to, the committee needs to review and make recommendations. So again, I think with all that said, now we can maybe discuss the specifics of this particular appeal. So I'm sorry to interrupt you.
It's quite all right. You made a lot of really good points, and I appreciate everything you said, Mayor, many of which I was thinking of as well. I guess with that in mind, I, I would hope that by the time you come back before us, Ashley, in June, that we have a little bit more review process that that, that committee has done, and that they've accelerated their schedule. Because I think, for me, like, some of these questions, it'd be nice for them to hash that out among themselves. There's a lot of smart people in that review committee, and I certainly would like to hear their perspective on it. They represent a wide array of, of things. I guess, to the Mayor's comment about the appeal process, I, I suppose, I feel a little sheepish that as much time and effort that went into the water policy, which was extensive, that we kind of left this appeal process a little bit vague, which, we worked really hard, Glenn, and you did a great job. And so did, so did the entire Public Works staff, and everyone in the city was a part of it. So I'm proud of what we put together. But, you know, you missed some things, I guess. But what I would say is, I, in my mind, when, when we passed this water policy with this appeal process, I thought of it as, this situation that we're in with Palmer is exactly the type of situation that I would imagine. We have a, a situation where, you know, obviously everyone up here identifies that we have a workforce housing issue, because just very recently, we created a Workforce Housing Commission to deal with that. So here's, here's an entity coming forward to address that, which is great. And I said this at the Water Issues Subcommittee when you brought this up. I'm likely a big fan of this development. I think it would probably be good for our community to have more housing like this. But I think that we need to have a robust conversation, not just at the Water Issues Subcommittee level, but at this level of the council, as this project comes forward, and say, what is the, what is the value that this is going to, you know, bring, and hear from the developer, and get a better understanding of what they're, what they're deciding to do. As to the options that you presented, I, I think that it would be really detrimental to go with the option where we just shut down all water altogether. I think that would be really hasty and create a lot of unforcing consequences potentially. And I guess I'm thinking about the folks that came forward today with water, water, like, applications. You have someone who's increasing their demand by, you know, .15 or .18, and then suddenly, this, we say, gosh, this apartment complex, it's a good idea, it's in a good location, it's, you know, people aren't necessarily going to be super upset about it. We approve it. And then all of a sudden, you know, Inspire Sports is here, and they say, hey, we're not even really probably going to use as much water. And suddenly, they have to wait six months. I, I think that would be, in my opinion, a hasty, hasty move on our part. But I think we need to kind of have these appeal processes. It needs to be robust, and, and kind of, we need to give it a lot of consideration. The other thing I will say, just to kind of button up with what the Mayor was saying, I would love to, and I don't, I want to be careful, because we've talked about the idea of staying close to agenda, and this isn't specifically agendas, and agendas, but I think in the global context of the water policy, I would love to have a deeper conversation about what potentially rolling over looks like going forward, and if that's worthy of consideration. I'd love to hear what the Water Policy Review Committee thinks. And I'd love to consider some options where maybe there's a, I, I was talking to the Mayor about this after Water Issues Subcommittee met. And in my mind, I, I think of, in the private sector where I've worked a lot, you have PTO time that you build up, and you can only roll over 40 hours every year. And then even if you have 600, it doesn't matter. You, and the idea is that incentivizes it to get used to some of it. There's probably a lot of different ideas around it. But I think, you know, we need to look at it and kind of see, and this is a new policy, frankly, and a new budget process. And we're learning, and I think it's, it's good that we're having this conversation. And I appreciate all the detail that Public Works is putting into it. So thanks.
Let's remember, Rusi.
Thank you. I was at the planning and zoning meeting where this project, Palmer, was passed in five minutes. Nobody asked about workforce housing. The applicant came up to the podium. Nobody asked him one question. And he had the opportunity to give a presentation about his property. He said, I don't have anything to say. So why, why are we talking about workforce housing when it was never mentioned? Are we just projecting hopes and wishes upon this? Because if you just look at reality, what was approved was 209 units, which I think will average maybe 400 people, who are going to come here and use city services, use our water. And what is the consideration? What is the tangible benefit that we're going to get in return that is going to compel us to pass this with, it's just going to be another apartment complex, maybe full of seniors? So...
Could I interrupt? Sorry.
Yeah.
Just, and I was going to do earlier when you were bringing up Palmer. I think Palmer's really relevant to help illustrate the problem and as an example. But I, I think that's about the end of it. So you don't want to get into the details of Palmer. But the other thing is, you want to be careful not to focus on that as example as you set policy, because specific examples can lead to bad policy. So I think you just want to limit the, kind of this discussion on Palmer.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is discuss option one. I think paragraph one of option one is fine. Paragraph two, when it talks about the appeal process, demonstrate benefits to the city such as job creation, wages, sales tax, economic impact. I think we should insert workforce housing or other considerations to the city. And that way, if they come and they have some compelling region, and I think we should have the words workforce housing to start the conversation with the applicant, and quit selling Prescott short, we need to start leveraging our water to get benefits from the applicants, so that we will have sustainable growth and growth that values our community. So I would support option one with a couple of minor clarifications. Because if we support this, say, an apartment, just any apartment that brings in, that uses 29 acre feet, what if the next month, say, the VA, you know, they're planning on having an apartment for homeless veterans? We don't, certainly don't want to shut that, that project out by approving another project. So I can see where we need to have the, the appeal process and leave the door open for good quality projects. But I think we need to be a little more forceful in leveraging our water, especially if we're going to get workforce housing. Thank you.
Well, I will say that the reference to other benefits would probably cover that. Councilman Tenney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief. Christmas is in five days. So, so a couple of things, we're not being asked about some of the things that we've talked about, but we are being asked about a couple of things. You'd asked about 25 acre feet on both residential and non-residential. Given the data you've showed us so far, that seems, and, and your recommendation, that seems to be reasonable. That's what I would vote for at this point, just to let folks know. The Palmer example is salient to us making a determination about options one and two. I think that the... I think that the policy, and by the way, we're not being asked to amend the black part of the policy, and it's worth noting that in both Options One and Two, the black part is identical. So it's not, yeah, that's the current policy. So it's not which of those current policies do you like better. They're both exactly the same. We're being asked about the red part. I believe it's silent on that part, because it was intended to be silent, that every project that comes before the Water Issues Committee and the council would be treated the same, in that they would count toward the allocation of 50 acre feet. I think it's intentional that it's silent. And so to clarify that, I would be in favor of Option Two. The water policy that we have certainly is, it can be leveraged to manage growth, Mayor. I agree with you 100%. There may have been those of us who had that in our minds as we did that, but mostly, it's to conserve water. And to say, well, if there's a really big something or other going on, let's just not even count that in the budget that we're, you couldn't possibly operate that way with your family if you said, hey, we make $1,000 a month, we're only going to spend $900 a month, but this month, if we buy a car, we'll spend $7,000 and we won't count it, or we'll spend $1,500 and we won't count it. It all counts in some way. So I would very much be in favor of Option Two. That conserves water better. Couple of folks have brought up really a good point. We'll take, we won't even refer to the specific development, but if there was, in one six-month period, a, an apartment building that came and said, hey, want to use 29 acre feet, there's a, that's what this discussion is partially about, is that there's room for a variance there, right? We can allow that to happen. It would still leave 21 acre feet during that six-month period for the VA or other small projects that come to us. There's no problem in that case. If there's something that's absolutely enormous, over 50 acre feet, then we'd have to have this discussion again, but it seems like that's not something that's right before us now. And those things, I think, were anticipated when we wrote the policy. So if there's a clarification needed, Number Two is what I would say. Did you have...
I just want to clarify what the current policy reads, because I've heard some very good comments on things that maybe could be changed in policy, but right now, there is no rollover, right?
Right.
You set the budget at whatever it, you set it out...
Lose it or lose it.
That was intentional.
Use it or lose it. If there is no rollover, and it's not fungible, you cannot transfer between non-residential and residential, and vice versa. That's the way the current policy reads. Now, maybe the ad hoc committee comes with recommendations to say, okay, we can roll over all of it, or some of it, or sum it with a limit, or things like that. Or you could transfer between the residential and the non-residential budget. I mean, that's another option to consider. But I just wanted to clarify how it currently reads. No rollover and no transfer between residential and non-residential.
Right. There's nothing written in there, because you can't do that. Same thing here, I think, with the Option Two, you were asking about Option One or Two. Reason that wasn't addressed is because there was no, the council did not contemplate at the time that there would be projects that wouldn't count toward the budget that we set for ourselves. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. C.W. can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you roll that up a little bit, so I can see the bottom of the Option Two there? I'm also leaning towards that. I do want to make a couple of comments, though, and I think I'm echoing everybody else. I think the appeals process is very, very important, and we keep that. We've got to have an avenue, if these projects that we are talking about attracting to come here. My concern about Option One also is the six-month stop. How can we, if, I mean, I could see potentially, if we've got to wait every six months to re, you know, to reappoint the water allocation, how that could potentially create a backlog? I mean, how do you get over the six months if we get, you know, potential, hypothetically, two, you know, workforce housing projects that we all of a sudden want, and they're ready to go, they're shovel-ready projects, but then we've got to say to them, you can run through the appeals project, or process, but even if you get the appeal, you have to wait in line behind the other three people that have already gotten it? I mean, am I wrong in thinking that? Because, you know, not that we have all these people waiting to build workforce housing, we don't, but we also don't have a crystal ball. And we've kind of been putting this out there, and I know myself, I've been approached by several people that are looking into it. It's a long process to get it done, but when they are ready and come forward, we've got to have an avenue to be able to pivot into that. So, again, am I wrong in thinking that Option Two would allow that? If the city grants an appeal, the amount of water granted in the appeal would not reduce the remaining budget...
Would it reduce?
Oh, for six months period by a commensurate amount.
It's the opposite.
You have it backwards.
Okay.
To be clear, Option One is not, if you grant an appeal for a project, let's just say any project, let's say it's 40 acre feet per year, right? And they come forward with an appeal, and they want 40 acre feet of water, and they go through the appeals process, if the city council were to grant that, whether it's residential, non-residential, there will be no more water available until the end of that six-month period.
There'd be 10 more acre feet available until, yes, if it were 40 feet?
Right now, it wouldn't, for that category, it would not be, let's say it's a 40-acre residential project, then there would be no more residential development until the end of that six-month period, or say it's a 40-acre, non-residential project, right? So, really, it would be, I mean, I know it's a controversial word, but in effect, a sort of a moratorium on that type of development, if an appeal were granted, until the end of the six-month period. And so it's just, there may be some legal ramifications of that with development rights, but I'll leave that to the state attorney.
But do I still have the floor?
Yeah, go ahead.
But that would happen in the appeals process. If the city at large is trying to attract workforce housing, and what comes in front of the appeals process is a 4,000, you know, pad development, we can choose to not, you know, provide the water to that if we, during that process, correct?
Absolutely. The city council has the discretion to grant an appeal or not.
Depending upon what we want. So in effect, that's a way of controlling what we want, because we want the workforce housing, we're not necessarily excited about the big planned area developments. So that would be option...
That's already available.
Yeah.
That's already available. The ability to grant an appeal or not is already written into the water policy.
No, but the issue's the water. So do we take it out of our allotment for the year, or do we allow an extension of the allotment? I would say allow the extension on a case-by-case basis. So that's Option Two, isn't it?
No, that's Option One.
Okay.
Still opposite.
If I could, on a case-by-case basis, wouldn't be either of those.
Correct.
It'd be a third option, which, by the way, this is your policy, and your interpretation, you're free to bring up another option, but that wouldn't be either of those options, it would be a third option.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Why don't you restate this third option?
I'm not going there. I'm going to work with what we have here. But the other benefit of that is, so we go over a little bit, again, deciding now on the project, that's going to allow us, because of course, we need the data, to decide every year, are we where we need to be on that water allotment? So I would like the flexibility. So that's my vote. Thank you.
Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, Mayor, we're just tripping over ourselves. We really are. I mean, I've seen this before, when I was first on council, and all it did was create this gigantic backlog of people applying for part of the budget, because somebody had used it all, or somebody had used more than half. I think that, you know, when we talk about workforce housing, we don't even know what that is yet.
Right. Yep.
And so, you know, I really find it hard to have that as part of the conversation. But I do think that we need to, you know, my question is, do we need to be, do we need to define this today?
I'm going to suggest yes.
Okay.
Because in January, you're going to hear an appeal for Palmer apartments, and I don't think it's fair to that project to make a citywide interpretation of the policy tied to one appeal.
My quest...
Any appeal.
My question is, if that's the case, and we know Palmer's coming up, why don't we just increase the water budget for the first six months? I mean, I really do think that all we're doing is creating a backlog if we know what's going to go on, if we know that Palmer's going to come to us, and we still say it's 25 acre feet? I think we need to be reasonable. I don't mind a water budget. I'm not a fan of a water budget, but I don't mind it. But I think that what happens is, is it creates conversations like this. And so if we know it's happening, we need to react to it and add to the budget.
Mayor, good.
That's another option.
If I may, and I appreciate what you said, and we had this conversation at the Water Issues Subcommittee. But let me just point something out. Again, it's your decision. One of the things that was recommended at the time was a residential water budget of, I want to say it was 54 acre feet for the next six-month period, which took into account Palmer, 29 acre feet, and then 25 for everything else. But that almost presumes that the Palmer appeal will be approved, and it's not even before you yet for your consideration. And so it...
Well, but we don't have to use that water. If we plan for it, and we don't agree with, you know, the premise of the Palmer, or whoever, I'm not using them as an example, just whoever, then we don't have to use all 50 acre feet or 54 acre feet or whatever. You know, we have half a brain, so we should be able to, you know, determine what we need and what we don't need.
As we budget for it, doesn't mean we have to allocate...
Councilman Moore.
That is accurate. Thank you, Mayor. I think what we're being asked to consider is Option One or Option Two, and whether an appeal should be deducted from the budget or not. And my whole feeling is, it shouldn't. I'm actually in favor of Option One. The purpose of an appeal is to make an exception, and you have a budget. You have a budget, but then it can appeal it, and so then it wouldn't deduct from it. So I think it's really simple. I think Option One's the best choice. I don't think it needs to be a complicated issue. If we want to approve a project, then we approve it, and it doesn't affect the budget, and just move forward. Simple.
Councilmember Ruzy.
Thank you. I'd like to propose some wording. If city council grants an appeal, the amount of water granted in the appeal, this is Option One, instead of saying would not reduce, replace that, would be excluded from the remaining budget. That might be a little more clarity, so that the budget will stay the same, the 25 for the six months, but if a compelling enough project comes through, like workforce housing, it will be excluded, the amount of water granted will be excluded from the budget. That might be a little more clear.
Joe, what do you think?
I think, to be honest, that's fine. The language, we can do that, but really, the, this is interpretation from you and a vote from you as to kind of one of these options and the understanding we get as part of this. This is legislative history in the future, so that's about as, just as helpful as the actual language, as long as it's consistent. I think that language is fine.
They both mean the same thing, effectively.
Right. I think fundamentally, they mean the same thing to me.
Me, too. Mayor Broton.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of thoughts. The reason I didn't like the idea of modifying the policy when we know we have an applicant down the road is because it feels like the tail wagging the dog a little bit to me, where, where, like, the applicant is driving the water budget as opposed to the city of Prescott setting the water budget. And that, that seems, like, that doesn't make sense, like, to me, personally. And I really appreciate what Councilman Moore said to me. It feels fairly clear to me, too, and I guess, here's a question I have for you, Ashley. In a situation where we hadn't, if we, before us, there were the options to approve a water budget going into next year for 25 resident, 25 acre feet of residential, 25 acre feet of non-residential. And would, if we set that budget under the current appeal process, is it even possible for someone coming forward to ask for 29 acre feet?
Yeah, it's an appeal.
It is.
Well, but I mean, I guess, it's over 50%, though, isn't it?
Yes.
So I guess it falls under that. But I guess, I guess they're taking more, so I guess, follow me through this. If they apply for an appeal for 29 acre feet, and the water policy is 25, do we go take four acre feet away from the other people? Like, I mean, do you see what I'm saying? Like, that's an appeal, if, I guess, the premise of Option Two is that you couldn't, in my mind, if you're going to say, 25 acre feet is all that we have in our wallet to spend, then someone coming and asking for 29, we don't have four more acre feet in our wallet to give to that person. I mean, by that logic, which is why Option One makes sense to me, in the sense that you've got a policy, the idea is that it's a case-by-case, and I understand, not case-by-case, but the idea is that someone asking for more than 50% has to appeal. And so they come before us, and we can say, nope, this doesn't rise to the circumstances of what we think is appropriate for an appeal, and sorry, you can phase out your project, or you can, you know, consider not doing it here, or whatever, right? Or we can kind of suss that out during that applicant's appeal process. That makes sense to me. The idea that we would, you know, take it away, and again, like, I don't know how you would do that. If someone comes and says, I want 29, and we only have 25 to give, where does that, again, do we go and take four acre feet from someone we just gave it to today? Does it, that doesn't work. I mean, the analogy of it being like a family budget isn't quite apt to me personally.
Councilmember Ruzy.
Another option that we could explore is the applicant, you know, if he wants to build 209 units and it busts the budget, we could just say, you know, we only have water for 100 units. You know, I mean, are we within our rights to do that? I think so, if we want to stay in our budget. You know, he could modify his project.
Mayor, could I add something to that discussion? You talked about topics you'd like the water, Mayor's Water Committee to look at. One thing that's brought forward about what Councilmember Ruzy is proposing is financing a project that if you only give allocation for a certain amount of units, or a certain portion of a project, you can't get finance for the whole project. That's the claim. That might be something that the water, another issue that needs to be looked at.
I've heard that, too. I've heard when you go out to finance a big project like that, you're not going to get financing in phases, generally speaking.
No, you're not.
You may have applied for an entire capital allocation based upon the whole project. You may decide to build it in phases, but you probably need to get the approval, both permitting and water originally, to be able to get the financing to then build it if you want in phases.
And Mayor, and Council, I have heard the same thing, that even having a water policy with a budgeted amount, what we're hearing, I don't know if it's accurate or not, but it's what we're hearing, is even that in and of itself might jeopardize financing. But certainly, the phasing, you know, the requirement to go through an appeals process, all these things can be, cause a lender to a project to hesitate, or to take it under stronger consideration. At least, that's what we're hearing from the development committee.
Well, I think it's difficult to be able to spend time at this meeting to redesign the entire water policy. And that's kind of what we're being asked to do today, in the absence of the ad hoc committee that was supposed to be looking at these and providing some recommendations or advice. But we're left with having to establish this next six-month period, or the entire year, broken down into six-month periods, and then try to decide how we go about looking at appeal processes, et cetera. So I'm kind of of the opinion that we probably would, in the absence of the ad hoc committee's deliberations and recommendations... hoc committee's deliberations and recommendations, we're just going to have to make a decision that is probably a short-term decision, and probably not permanently in long-term changing the policy.
Every six months, we're like this.
But quite frankly, I'll admit at the time that when the policy came forward, I expected more deliberation on the 25-25. I was thinking to myself, I probably would be more than willing to support a, maybe a 30-25, or a 30-20, or something like that. I thought the 25 was a little low. It would still meet our goals of having a, kind of a measured development process. And, you know, we still haven't even looked at the budget for trying to get a new fire station in the area to relieve some of the demand on the Lee Boulevard Fire Station. So I would just hate to see a project that really meets all the criteria for the things that we're hoping to support. And I think the Palmer project fits into some of these very positive aspects. So with that said, I think I'd like to see, at least in the short run, option number one, being able to provide an exception and an appeal for the project in and of itself. And then as the ad hoc committee gets into the meat of this stuff, coming back and make recommendations that we can adopt for the longer run. Doesn't cut off our nose, does spite our face right now when we have projects coming forward that I think are very valuable, because I think if we say no, they're not going to come back, they're just going to be dead.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you for those comments. So I think the wording, to be clear, should be changed to our two options, would be excluded from, or would not be excluded from. So option one would read, would be excluded from. And I would support option one with the caveat that the project has some compelling reason, some consideration when we're looking at the appeal, that will be of great benefit to the community. So I would support option one with the rewording, would be excluded from.
It already says that. It's in the black and white, it's in the black lettering.
Yeah.
Okay. But I'm just reiterating, to be perfectly clear.
Okay.
Councilman Shishka, your back up.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Joe, are we precluded, if we set a 25-acre foot budget, are we precluded from adding to that budget during the six months?
I think you would be precluded unless it's through an appeal process. So if it was through.
Think what?
Yes, through the appeal process, you could add to that 25, but otherwise, you are precluded otherwise.
Okay. Okay, that was, that was my question. I would agree with the mayor that we can't, if in fact we want a project, we can't just, you know, arbitrarily turn it down because some number in the water budget doesn't fit. So I would be in, in favor of option one.
CW can tell me.
Option one, in my opinion, is the only one that's going to give us the flexibility that we may need. And it's really all about the flexibility, to me, within, by the way, the appeals, the appeals board in the city is probably one of the most underused committees in the city, so put them to work. There's a lot of very qualified people there, but nonetheless, I, I'm going to go for number one. So can I make my very first motion?
May I correct something that you just said, just to be clear?
Okay.
Appeals for this go to the Water Issues Subcommittee?
Okay.
And then the city council?
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Okay, good.
Appeals for this policy?
For this policy?
Go to the water.
In the policy, in the policy, it goes to the Water Issues Subcommittee, if you look under two, they can either wait for the next six months under number one, or it goes before the Water Issues Subcommittee and the council. It's the wording that's already in the policy, in black, right before the proposed red line, which is in red.
They come to the water issues for an allocation, they get turned down, and then they can appeal to the city council?
No.
It goes forward to the city council regardless, with either, with a recommendation of denial from the Water Issues Subcommittee?
Denial or.
Or with a recommendation of approval from the Water Issues Subcommittee. It's just a recommendation.
Always comes to us.
The appeal, the appeal is ultimately decided by the city council.
Correct. But it goes through the Water Issues Subcommittee first?
It does.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I suppose you can make a, you can make a motion.
Well, help me out here.
Well, you first need to make a motion on the budget, I think, and, because there's three issues. We need to make a motion on the budget for residential, non-residential.
I can make the motion. Do you want me to make the motion? Go ahead. This is too complicated. Okay. For my first one, I'll make it easier. Recommended action, okay. Move to set the residential water budget for January 1 through January 30, 2023. I'm sorry, June. Gosh. June 30 at 2020, of 2023, at 25 acre feet per year.
Second.
Hold on.
And the non-residential water budget for the same period at 25 acre feet. It says here per year, but should it be per six months?
Acre feet per year.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
It's the volume of water.
Okay, period.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to just keep it at the same, 25 and 25, okay?
Now you can second it. Second.
All right. We've got a motion as second. Any further discussion? I think, as I mentioned, I think I'd rather see 30, but we have a motion and a second on the floor, so.
Public comment?
No.
No one in the public is left here.
All right. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor?
This is 6-1.
Oh.
Everybody was, okay. 6-1.
Okay.
All right, so that's our budget. Now, the second will be the appeal process.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the city's 2022 adopted water management policy to insert the following language at the end of Policy 14 as follows. Option one, if city council grants an appeal, the amount of water granted in the appeal would be excluded from the remaining budget for that six-month period by a commensurate amount.
You can't say by a commensurate amount if you're going to say.
Can you repeat that?
Can we just read, can we just have it as written?
Well, that's what it says in.
No, it doesn't.
It says, if city council grants an appeal, the amount of water granted in the appeal would not reduce the remaining budget for that six-month period by a commensurate amount.
Second.
She didn't make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Steve seconded.
I'll second it.
I make the motion that, as read by Sarah.
Okay, that's a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other further discussion?
Just really quickly, Mayor, based on what everybody said, I've had my mind changed about my initial thought, and I'll be voting for option one. I think there's been some, some sound arguments behind that.
Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
So those are the two primary issues.
That's it?
Okay.
All right, and the other considerations we'll bring forward to the mayor's ad hoc committee for their deliberation and how, get into the meat of this stuff, so that we don't have to make sausage here for two hours in front of the.
Could I just make a suggestion, Mayor? I know we want to wrap this up, but if people are going to bring an appeal, they need to articulate and in the narrative why their project deserves an appeal.
100%.
And council shouldn't be left to like, well, this may be workforce, well, this may not, no, you need to say, I'm bringing X to town, and this is worth an appeal.
Thank you.
Agree with that, Mayor?
Right, I mean, with the, the description of what would constitute approving an appeal, then they need to look at that and say, okay, here is the additional benefits.
And that should be the burden of the applicant, right, in the appeal. Agree?
All right, I think that concludes our agenda for the day. I do want to reference one quote that I came across that I thought was particularly relevant for this time of the year. What is Christmas? It's the tenderness of the past, courage for the present, hope for the future, and it's a wish that every cup may overflow with blessings of rich, eternal, and every path lead to peace and goodwill. That's from Magnus Faro, American author. So this meeting is adjourned, and merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to all. To all. A happy new year.
And Ashley, and Tyler, and George.
We'll see you next year.
To you all.